President, I will now call this meeting to order. It is 5:45 PM. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today, so I'll turn the floor over to Mrs. Teri Moore, Associate Superintendent for Accountability and Strategic Planning, who will present information regarding the development of the strategic plan for Glenapark ISD. Ms. Moore?
Good evening, President Miller, Superintendent Moore, and Board Trustees and Cabinet. I'll be here tonight just presenting you an update on our strategic planning efforts. As promised, we've completed all of our surveys, and we wanted to share the results of the surveys with you tonight, and we will come back in January to take some action and make some decisions based on this information tonight. But we'll start with where are we in the process? We've completed the data collection and the analysis phase, and we're about to start the plan development when we return in January, so we're excited to begin that phase. This first slide is a follow-up to the information I brought to you in October. If you remember, we had completed our teacher surveys, and looking at the two big action items from those surveys, one was based on the personal spending of our teachers, and the other item was based on the planning and preparation times for our teachers. And so through a follow-up survey with them, we were able to determine the two main reasons our teachers spend out of pocket. One is it was easier, it saves time, and it was faster than going through the district procurement process, and the other was to supplement our curriculum or supplement the instruction in their classrooms. A lot of our teachers double-coded this answer. They needed it for curriculum, but it was faster, so they purchased it out of pocket. And so we'll be working with our procedures and things we're doing with our campuses to make sure that we're addressing this need for our teachers moving forward. The second area is what are our teachers spending five or more hours after school, after the regular school day doing? And you can see the two big ones, the ones that we're spending multiple hours after school each day or each week, was for planning and preparation and for classroom paperwork, grading papers, filing, creating reports. And so another item that we're working on, you'll know through our school calendar next year, how we can address this need for our teachers as well. And then moving on to the survey results, just a reminder, we sent the surveys to our parents. We sent that survey in English and in Spanish. We did our teacher group, our employees and our staff, it went in English and Spanish as well. And we also surveyed our community groups and our district planning and advisory committee. In the results you're about to see, we've color-coded the top three responses for each group in green, and the bottom three responses for each group will be the red bars. Our survey was divided into two sections, one measure, the first section measuring culture, and you can see these are the results from our parent group. This is the Spanish and English survey combined, and you can see there were some questions that were asked only of our employees, and you'll see that's where the blank bars are. But the top three results from our parents, our facilities responded was high by our parents, they feel safe while on GPISD property, and that they believe we have a very effective use of our technology, our computers and our information systems. You can see that through the red bars, the areas they believe we need to address or consider are to creating a climate in which people are able to freely express their ideas. We want, they want our leadership model to be a more effective leadership model at our campuses and at the district level, and for us to be more supportive of out-of-the-box thinking and not maybe always doing things the way we've always done them. The same survey from our teachers, you can see overall the scores are really nice from our teachers. However, the best areas, they said their encounters with district and campus support staff are wonderful. The professional development is widely encouraged and available to them, and that they feel the effective use of appropriate technology and computers as well. The areas they believe we need to work on, they want us to reconsider compensation fairly for the work they do, constructive climate in which people are able to freely express their ideas, and to support out-of-the-box thinking and not doing the same thing. So some of the areas are the same from our parents and from our teachers, and when you look at the staff, you can see a couple of the areas are the same for them as well. If we just notice the ones at the bottom, you also again see constructive climate where we can express freely, maybe different opinions, and supporting out-of-the-box thinking. High in this group, again, you'll see the effective use of technology, computer, and our information systems. And then from our community groups, you can see the overall scores from our community groups are fours and higher, we, the responses from them were very nice toward our district. But you can see that one of the two areas where they believe we need to work on as well, again, being supportive of out-of-the-box thinking, and they were, their effective, our effective use of computers was one of their areas they want us to work on. They believe, you can see the green, the areas that were the highest for them, again, encounters with our district and support staff, our facilities are clean and well-maintained, and they believe our mission is very clearly stated and widely known in the community. When I put all of the scores together for the culture, here are all of the groups put together in rank order. At the top of the graph, you'll see the three areas that across all responding groups that we believe we want to consider for our action throughout the spring semester. From the staff only and our teachers feeling compensated fairly for the work done, free to express unpopular views without personal attack, that was the constructive climate, and district supporting out-of-the-box thinking and not doing the things we've always done. At the bottom, effective technology, computers and information system was the highest rated response from all of our groups. The second part of the survey was based on our district programs and our district procedures, and then the same process, the red are the three lowest rated, and the green are the three highest rated. From our parents, highest coming out in the survey were was our athletic programming, our CTE, our career and technical education, along with our dual-credit and certification program, and our investment in technology. In our teacher groups, you can see some of the same areas, highest rated, our athletic programming, our CTE, career and technical education, and investment in technology. And the same from our employees and staff, our athletic programming, investment in technology, and they believe we have educational equity and diversity well in line. And then from our community groups, you can see they rated us a five out of five in quite a few areas, including the same as in the other stakeholder groups. But when I look at all of our survey groups across the board for district programmings, you can see the top three in green, athletic programming across the board was the highest rated, our investment in technology for our campuses and our students, and our career and technical education were very highly rated across all of our stakeholder groups. You can see the average scores for most of our programs are fours and higher, so they did, they performed very well across the board. But the three that this, across surveys that we want to consider and look at for strategic action in the spring, employee retention initiatives, retaining especially not just our newer staff, but our upper-level staff with more years of experience, employee pay and benefits, and mental health initiatives for students and staff. These are not to say that we don't already have a lot of things for these, but maybe in today's time, we need to reconsider, do we need to do more, or do we need to publicly communicate better what we are doing? As these, these responses may be not just what we're doing, but maybe we don't know what we're doing out in the community, maybe a better effort there. Coming up, our next steps as we move into building the plan, we're going to come back to you guys in January, and we will outline the goals and the visions you guys have for our school district moving forward, and then the district leadership and stakeholder groups will start developing actionable objectives based on your goals and your vision, and then creating action plans, how we're going to implement your vision and your goals for the school district. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the community as well as parents, the category with leadership model is a model for effective leadership. Was that explained in depth, or because it seems so broad and vague?
It could be very broad and vague. It was about, do we have a shared vision? Are we doing what we said we were going to do? Are we, you know, basically walking the talk of leadership? And so that if we wanted to, on any of these questions come spring, we could dive in deeper, just like we did with the teachers, and say specifically in this area, what do you see as the strength and the weakness?
Okay, but we typically address the top three.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Or any you guys identify that needs to be a critical part of your vision for us moving forward in five years? We certainly could dive deeper into any of those.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Ms. Moore, well done.
All right, thank you, and happy holidays to each of you.
It is 5:56, the regular board meeting will begin at six o'clock. It is 5:45 PM. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today, so I'll turn the floor over to Mrs. Teri Moore, Associate Superintendent for Accountability and Strategic Planning, who will present information regarding the development of the strategic plan for Glenapark ISD. Ms. Moore?
Good evening, President Miller, Superintendent Moore, and Board Trustees and Cabinet. I'll be here tonight just presenting you an update on our strategic planning efforts. As promised, we've completed all of our surveys, and we wanted to share the results of the surveys with you tonight, and we will come back in January to take some action and make some decisions based on this information tonight. But we'll start with where are we in the process? We've completed the data collection and the analysis phase, and we're about to start the plan development when we return in January, so we're excited to begin that phase. This first slide is a follow-up to the information I brought to you in October. If you remember, we had completed our teacher surveys, and looking at the two big action items from those surveys, one was based on the personal spending of our teachers, and the other item was based on the planning and preparation times for our teachers. And so through a follow-up survey with them, we were able to determine the two main reasons our teachers spend out of pocket. One is it was easier, it saves time, and it was faster than going through the district procurement process, and the other was to supplement our curriculum or supplement the instruction in their classrooms. A lot of our teachers double-coded this answer. They needed it for curriculum, but it was faster, so they purchased it out of pocket. And so we'll be working with our procedures and things we're doing with our campuses to make sure that we're addressing this need for our teachers moving forward. The second area is what are our teachers spending five or more hours after school, after the regular school day doing? And you can see the two big ones, the ones that we're spending multiple hours after school each day or each week, was for planning and preparation and for classroom paperwork, grading papers, filing, creating reports. And so another item that we're working on, you'll know through our school calendar next year, how we can address this need for our teachers as well. And then moving on to the survey results, just a reminder, we sent the surveys to our parents. We sent that survey in English and in Spanish. We did our teacher group, our employees and our staff, it went in English and Spanish as well. And we also surveyed our community groups and our district planning and advisory committee. In the results you're about to see, we've color-coded the top three responses for each group in green, and the bottom three responses for each group will be the red bars. Our survey was divided into two sections, one measure, the first section measuring culture, and you can see these are the results from our parent group. This is the Spanish and English survey combined, and you can see there were some questions that were asked only of our employees, and you'll see that's where the blank bars are. But the top three results from our parents, our facilities responded was high by our parents, they feel safe while on GPISD property, and that they believe we have a very effective use of our technology, our computers and our information systems. You can see that through the red bars, the areas they believe we need to address or consider are to creating a climate in which people are able to freely express their ideas. We want, they want our leadership model to be a more effective leadership model at our campuses and at the district level, and for us to be more supportive of out-of-the-box thinking and not maybe always doing things the way we've always done them. The same survey from our teachers, you can see overall the scores are really nice from our teachers. However, the best areas, they said their encounters with district and campus support staff are wonderful, the professional development is widely encouraged and available to them, and that they feel the effective use of appropriate technology and computers as well. The areas they believe we need to work on, they want us to reconsider compensation fairly for the work they do, constructive climate in which people are able to freely express their ideas, and to support out-of-the-box thinking and not doing the same thing. So some of the areas are the same from our parents and from our teachers, and when you look at the staff, you can see a couple of the areas are the same for them as well. If we just notice the ones at the bottom, you also again see constructive climate where we can express freely, maybe different opinions, and supporting out-of-the-box thinking. High in this group, again, you'll see the effective use of technology, computer, and our information systems. And then from our community groups, you can see the overall scores from our community groups are fours and higher, we, the responses from them were very nice toward our district. But you can see that one of the two areas where they believe we need to work on as well, again, being supportive of out-of-the-box thinking, and they were, their effective, our effective use of computers was one of their areas they want us to work on. They believe, you can see the green, the areas that were the highest for them, again, encounters with our district and support staff, our facilities are clean and well-maintained, and they believe our mission is very clearly stated and widely known in the community. When I put all of the scores together for the culture, here are all of the groups put together in rank order. At the top of the graph, you'll see the three areas that across all responding groups that we believe we want to consider for our action throughout the spring semester. From the staff only and our teachers feeling compensated fairly for the work done, free to express unpopular views without personal attack, that was the constructive climate, and district supporting out-of-the-box thinking and not doing the same thing. So some of the areas are the same from our parents and from our teachers, and when you look at the staff, you can see a couple of the areas are the same for them as well. If we just notice the ones at the bottom, you also again see constructive climate where we can express freely, maybe different opinions, and supporting out-of-the-box thinking. High in this group, again, you'll see the effective use of technology, computer, and our information systems. And then from our community groups, you can see the overall scores from our community groups are fours and higher, we, the responses from them were very nice toward our district. But you can see that one of the two areas where they believe we need to work on as well, again, being supportive of out-of-the-box thinking, and they were, their effective, our effective use of computers was one of their areas they want us to work on. They believe, you can see the green, the areas that were the highest for them, again, encounters with our district and support staff, our facilities are clean and well-maintained, and they believe our mission is very clearly stated and widely known in the community. When I put all of the scores together for the culture, here are all of the groups put together in rank order. At the top of the graph, you'll see the three areas that across all responding groups that we believe we want to consider for our action throughout the spring semester. From the staff only and our teachers feeling compensated fairly for the work done, free to express unpopular views without personal attack, that was the constructive climate, and district supporting out-of-the-box thinking and not doing the things we've always done. At the bottom, effective technology, computers and information system was the highest rated response from all of our groups. The second part of the survey was based on our district programs and our district procedures, and then the same process, the red are the three lowest rated, and the green are the three highest rated. From our parents, highest coming out in the survey were was our athletic programming, our CTE, our career and technical education, along with our dual-credit and certification program, and our investment in technology. In our teacher groups, you can see some of the same areas, highest rated, our athletic programming, our CTE, career and technical education, and investment in technology. And the same from our employees and staff, our athletic programming, investment in technology, and they believe we have educational equity and diversity well in line. And then from our community groups, you can see they rated us a five out of five in quite a few areas, including the same as in the other stakeholder groups. But when I look at all of our survey groups across the board for district programmings, you can see the top three in green, athletic programming across the board was the highest rated, our investment in technology for our campuses and our students, and our career and technical education were very highly rated across all of our stakeholder groups.
Dr. Martin, would you please join your students onstage?[601.16][601.16](Applause) Thank you. This concludes the recognition portion of the meeting. You may be seated.
Any Board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or Board member, and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year upon the
Any others? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wanda. Mr. Sam Harris, renowned director for Fine Arts and Academic Enrichment, will present the academic spotlight. Mr. Harris will highlight the Fine Arts programs and the opportunities the programs provide for our students. Sam, please step up to the podium.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the Board. Dr. Moore can fire me tomorrow, but I'm going to take a real quick, personal thank you all for being School Board members, and as a constituent, I respect what you do and how hard you work, and especially in this time when School Board meetings and other places haven't been fun. So just personally, from me to you, thank you for being our School Board. I say all the time to you guys, to Dr. Moore, to our Cabinet members, thank you for your support of the arts and music education in Galena Park ISD, but tonight I have some teachers talking to you about what I really mean by support.[735.19][735.19](Music)
I always say our students can do anything if we give them the support they need to achieve success. And here in Galena Park, that means more than just showing up to a concert. It means...[758.72][758.72](Laughter)[759.72][759.72](Laughter)
Well, we can sing some Christmas carols.[763.12][763.12](Laughter)
I always say our students can do anything if we give them the support they need to achieve success. And here in Galena Park, that means more than just showing up to a concert. It means recruiting, hiring, retaining, and professionally developing the very best teachers we can, providing them the resources and our students the resources to get the equipment, the technology, and enable them to travel and do the things they need to do to be successful. Here are some of our best teachers to talk to you about that.[807.38][807.38](Music)
My name is Shane Goforth. I'm the Director of Bands at North Shore Senior High School.
My name is Danny Rubio, Head Band Director at North Shore Middle School.
We're here to say thank you to our incredible School Board and Administration for the support that you guys give us to make our kids successful every day. I want to first say thank you for the incredible facilities that we have in Galena Park ISD. You continue to look for opportunities to create facilities where kids can be taught in a more effective and efficient way.
And because of your support, we're able to allow our middle school kids to enter the all-region band clinic and concert process at no cost. The students do not have to pay any fees, and that's thanks to your support. If it wasn't for that, many of our students would not go through the process.
My name is Justin Allen, and I'm the Band Director at Galena Park Middle School. One of the things that the Board does to support us is provide school-owned instruments. Having school-owned instruments from flute all the way through percussion really helps our kids participate in this life-changing activity. Another thing is we're able to pay for transportation to take our students on trips, both educationally and contests. That way, they have the opportunity to compete at a high level and experience that life-changing event.
Hello, my name is Shelby Sims, and I am the elementary music teacher at Woodland Acres Elementary School. As an educator and former student of Galena Park ISD, I've experienced firsthand the value that the district places in putting students outside of just their classroom and their community. I remember going to the Houston Symphony, and it's an experience that my kids get to have today. They'll get to experience something that they didn't even know that they would love through the Galena Park ISD Fine Arts Department.
Hi, my name is Daniel Poncek, Choir Director at Galena Park High School.
Hello, my name is Enrique Cojaso. I'm the Choir Director at North Shore Senior High School.
We're very fortunate in the fact that we have the ability to do so many things with our kids. Music now costs over $2 a folio, and if we have 50 kids in a choir, that is $100 for one song for one choir. If we have four, five, six choirs, you can see the costs add up immediately. We are also very fortunate that we have the ability to provide them uniforms, tuxedos, and formal concert dresses.
I'm very fortunate to be in my 35th year of teaching here, all in Galena Park ISD. When I first started at elementary, we had everything we needed. Same thing with high school. We have performed with the Houston Symphony. We have been granted the honor of performing for the Texas Music Educators Association, and when we had to find funding for that, well, we didn't have to find anything, we just asked, and our trustees provided everything we needed.
And on top of that, we now have Steinway pianos that we can use in concerts to help enrich our community and let them know that they can achieve so much more.
Hello, my name's Erin Houston, and I'm the Head Choir Director at North Shore Middle School. We are so well-provided for from our GP ISD School Board, from the budgets that we receive for supplies, but also for consultants. It takes a village to raise a great choral program, and we need a company, and we have to bring in instrumentalists to enhance our performances. Again, thank you so much for that.[1015.23][1015.23](Music)
Hi, my name is Veronica Stell. I'm the Theater Director at North Shore Senior High. I'd like to talk about the wonderful support we get here at Galena Park ISD and specifically the Theater Department. We are unique in the fact that we receive a budget and we don't rely on ticket sales, so it is a wonderful thing for our students to have and for our teachers.
Hi, my name is Courtney Wine. I'm one of the theater teachers here at North Shore Senior High. We were very lucky to acquire a new lighting system and a sound system for our auditorium, and it is a great and complex system. It's very good for our students to learn because it is one of the same light boards that professionals use. We do also have solar frame lights. There are actually lights that actually move. They're up on the battens on the very top of the auditorium. That's what professionals actually use the most.
Hi, I'm Julie Glover. I teach theater at North Shore 9th Grade Center and at North Shore Senior High. So part of the funding that is given to us goes to our department, and what we use that money for is to purchase fabrics, machines, thread, materials for our students to make the various costumes and props and pieces for our shows.
What's great about this is that students have wonderful tools, and they are empowered to come into the classroom and learn a little bit more about all of this new technology, which is great for them in developing their skills with all the equipment we have here available at Galena Park ISD.[1108.61][1108.61](Music)
Hi, I'm Wesley Frye, one of the art teachers here at Galena Park High School. It is important for us to be able to provide necessary resources for our students so they can create wonderful artworks each year. Our Galena Park ISD Fine Arts Department provides us with an ample budget each year so that we can purchase the best art supplies and technology for our students.
Hello, I'm Diana Resendez. It's my fifth year teaching here at Galena Park High School. I actually did my internship here. One thing that I'm very appreciative of the school, they provide a lot of staff development for us. One of them is our TAEA conference that we have annually. This year, we'll be traveling to Round Rock, where we will be having lots of classes, workshops that will help us improve our skills and also pass that on to our students.
Hello, my name is Tony Hurtado. I teach art, ceramics, and APR history here at Galena Park High School. I am so grateful to be teaching in a district that strongly supports the fine arts and has always provided my students with the resources they need to create their masterpieces. We have the opportunity to visit the Museum of Fine Arts Houston and the Manil Collection every year. Having the resources and opportunity to visit Houston's museums is crucial for our students' success, and for that, we are grateful.
Hi, my name is Sonia Lloyd. I'm the art teacher at Woodland Acres Elementary School. Galena Park ISD provides museum visits for our 4th graders. Museum visits allows our students to see something new that sparks their curiosity. It allows them to learn outside the confines of the classroom.
As a result of our district's generosity, our students have the best resources to consistently create award-winning artworks. Thank you, Galena Park ISD, and our Fine Arts Department for your continued support.
I hope you enjoyed hearing from some of our teachers about how successful our kids are with the resources they've been provided here in Galena Park ISD. I like to describe Galena Park to my counterparts out in the rest of Texas by describing standing on the railroad tracks at MacArthur and looking back toward the west and seeing the skyscrapers of downtown Houston in the distance like the gleaming Emerald City in The Wizard of Oz. And I think what we do with those resources in music, art, theater, and dance are to give our kids the opportunity and enable them to join hands with their friends and journey down their own yellow brick road to a successful and more happy life.[1270.74][1270.74](Music)[1271.74][1271.74](Applause) Before we have our Christmas treat coming, do you all have any questions for me about what we're doing, working hard, about ready to send 400 kids to Dallas on Saturday?
I just want to say, great job and great information. Thank you.
That's why I'm here and not going anywhere anytime soon.[1309.13][1309.13](Laughter) So, we have for you now the North Shore Senior High School Corral under the direction
And thank you, North Shore Senior High Choir.
And thank you, North Shore Senior High Choir. We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Sonny Fletcher, Senior Director for Facilities Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 Bond Program construction update. Sonny?
Good evening. Thank you, President Miller, Board, Dr. Moore and Cabinet. Real quick, just real quick, we'll talk about our Pyburn project. I always promise interesting pictures, so the picture on the right, I included that just for scale. We will be building up the site. So, that manhole you see will be in the parent student pickup drive. We're adding that much, so on the retaining wall will be about where you see the sheep's foot marks on the left. A little intermittent mark. So, that's just how much fill we're bringing in on that site. In the picture on the left, you can see the building pad for Phase 1 of that multi-phase project's going along nicely. And then, of course, we have our project in design, our Galena Park High School Career and Technology and Cafeteria addition. And then, as part of that, we have to relocate Parkside Drive. Really short one for me tonight. Thank you all. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. We will now move on to the new business portion. I would entertain a motion of approval for granting the superintendent authority to modify, rescind, or implement COVID-19 safety protocols, including face masks for students, staff, and visitors on Galena Park ISD property as necessary.
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve to grant the superintendent authority to modify, rescind, or implement COVID-19.
Wanda, can you move the mic down so they can hear you, please?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Yeah, I can hear you. I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve to grant the superintendent authority to modify, rescind, or implement COVID-19 safety protocols, including face masks for students, staff, and visitors on Galena Park ISD property as presented.
I, Noe Espaza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ms. Wanda Johnson and seconded by Noe Espaza. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes seven to zero with no abstentions. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution nominating a candidate for a position to the Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District.
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the resolution nominating a candidate for position to the Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? Okay, it's seven in favor, none against, and no abstentions. We move now to the consent agenda portion. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Adrian Stevens, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Noe Espaza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ms. Adrian Stevens and seconded by Noe Espaza. All in favor? That passes seven in favor, zero against, and no abstentions. With respect to the construction consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second that motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? Seven four, none against, and no abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Noe Espaza, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Herbert Sanchez, second that motion.
A motion was made by Noe Espaza and seconded by Herbert Sanchez. All in favor? Seven in favor, none against, and no abstentions. The following documents were presented to the Board for information. Dr. Sonia Nasey, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented one, a comparative tax collection report for the period of September 1st through October 31st for fiscal years 2020 to 2021 and 2021 to 2022. The donation report for November of 2021. And the 2016 Bond Program financial report as of October 31st, 2021. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented the early Head Start Policy Council meeting minutes from October 2021 and the early Head Start update and Fund 205 expenditure report summary from October 2021. An executive session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by Sections 551.001 through Section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the Board upon notice thereof, as the Board shall determine. A closed or executive meeting of the Board will now be held at 6:35 PM. Executive session is adjourned, and the Board is now in open session. The time is 6:47 PM. I entertain motions on the items covered in the executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented?
I, Norma Hernandez. I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the employment of contractual personnel.
Aye, Norma Hernandez, move we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
Aye, Herbert Sanchez, second that motion.
There's a motion made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Herbert Sanchez. All in favor? That passes seven four, none against, and no abstentions. There being no other business before the Board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. It is 6:48 p.m.